Welcome to the March 20th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. We're glad you're here and we're going to get this started right away. And let's start with a pledge and Commissioner Garrison is going to lead us in then.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Garrison.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
We know that Chairman Rossler is not here. Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Student Commissioner Jonah Cranford has an excused absence. And Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Thank you.
First item we want to take care of is just the approval of the minutes from the previous message or previous meeting. Is there any comment on those items? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve those in a second? Okay, in a second. Okay, thank you. So we find those meeting notes approved. We have five with yes and two absent, and so those are approved. Patsy, are there any agenda changes for tonight?
Good evening, Vice Chair Looney. No changes tonight. Thank you.
During each meeting, there's a time when the public has an opportunity to speak about something that is not on the agenda. And if someone has an item they wish to speak on, there's a speaker slip that needs to be filled out and brought to the front, and you may have the allocated time for that. Is there anyone that has something to speak about? You want to come forward and fill out a speaker slip, please? Okay. For Tomas Martino?
No, it's Laura Gonzalez. It's for P-160470, North Santa Fe Apartments, Orient Pacific.
Is...
That's the right one on the agenda? Oh, it is?
Yeah, this would be for items not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If there's no speakers, then we'll move to the first item. During a public hearing process, the staff gives a presentation and we have the opportunity to hear from the public after the presentation is made and also after the applicant has made the presentation. This is not... Oh, I'm sorry. For the first one, it is a decision, correct? So staff, would you please give a presentation on the first item, which is a special use permit for 535 North Santa Fe Avenue?
Certainly. Good evening, Vice Chair Looney, Planning Commissioners. I'm Patsy Chow, Deputy Director of Community Development, City Planner, and I'm here this evening to present to you the request for a special use permit for 76 Gas Station at 535 North Santa Fe Avenue as it pertains to a request for sale of alcoholic beverages type 20. So essentially, the request is what I've just described as being the request for selling alcoholic beverages type 20 beer and wine for off-site consumption at the existing gas station at 535 North Santa Fe Avenue. The requested hours and the proposed hours for sale of alcoholic beverages will be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight each day of the week. And as mentioned, it would be a type 20 for beer and wine license. There are some minor tenant improvements that would occur together as part of the request, which has to do with installing electronic lockable cooler doors for the sales area where the alcoholic beverages would be available for sales. And I also requested the applicant to make some improvements to their existing trash enclosure to meet our development code standards as far as providing a roof as well as decorative metal gates, which were not existing at the time of staff's review of the project. So they're actually in process of doing the particular improvements for the trash enclosure. The aerial photo here just identifies the project site, which is at the southeast corner of North Santa Fe and California Avenue. It is zoned MU40, which is a mixed-use zone, and it is designated in our general plan as mixed-use as well. The site, as it's shown on this particular slide, is surrounded by residential uses to the north and east, and there are some commercial uses across the street on Santa Fe on the west side, as you can see it on this slide. The... Just showing the proposed floor changes, which has to do with the coolers, the doors having to be electronically lockable type cooler doors. And it is an existing floor plan, so it is an existing convenience store, as you already know. For the alcohol sales for off-site consumption, there are specific findings that the decision-maker has to make with regards to the request. And I've listed on this slide the six findings pertaining to the request, which is basically starting at the top to make sure that the proposed use is consistent with our general plan, which it is in terms of the mixed-use designation and our zoning, and making sure on the second one that the proposed use and the manner to be conducted is permitted in the applicable zone and conforms to all the applicable federal, state, and local laws. So through a special use permit, which is allowed in the mixed-use zone, they are able to make a request for the type 20, the off-site consumption beer and wine off-sale request. Under item three, the site for the proposed use has a size that is sufficient to reasonably accommodate the planned activities. And as I mentioned before, it is an existing site, existing conditions. They are adding the sale of alcoholic beverages or requesting that to be added onto the operations. And there is existing infrastructure, obviously, surrounding the site that actually serves the subject property. Number four, the design location size and operating characteristics of the proposed use would be compatible with the existing as well as planned land uses in the vicinity. It is surrounded by commercial as well as residential uses, and it provides a convenience to the surrounding neighborhood. Number five, the proposed use at its location will provide the neighborhood and/or the city with a service or a facility that contributes to the general welfare. And as stated, it provides a convenience. There is an existing convenience store there, so they are adding the sale of alcoholic beverages along with all the other sales of other items that they currently sell at the store right now. And last but not least, to make sure that the proposed use and the operations will not be unduly detrimental to health, safety, general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, property improvements in the vicinity, fiscal or economic interests of the City of Vista. And as the project, the proposed request conforms with our general plan, we have also added two conditions of approval from the city as well as the Sheriff's Department, a list of conditions that will help make sure that, in fact, the use is not going to be detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare of the persons that reside or work in that vicinity. In terms of the analysis for this type of request, we look at two items. One pertaining to how it's codified and identified by the Sheriff's Department in terms of the crime beat areas, and it is in beat 306, which identifies at this point per 2017 statistics that it is at 178% of the citywide average. In the report that I've produced, at the time that I wrote the report, it was actually identified as 169.3%, which was the 2016 data. So just last week, I found out, actually, the 2017 data was released, and that's the increase to the 178. What that means is that anything greater than 120% of the citywide average is then considered a high crime beat area. However, it is not over-concentrated whereby the census tract, 195.02, allows for three off-sale licenses, and right now, there's only one existing, which is found at the Eddie's Market, not too far south from this location at 415 North Santa Fe. So there are three allowed and only one existing, but it is high crime, as identified here on this slide. And again, the Sheriff's Department and the city have included a list of conditions in order to address concerns pertaining to safety and maintaining health, safety, and welfare of the community. So on this slide, I just wanted to identify the location of the crime beat, the 306, which is kind of in the middle of the slide, the photo on the left. The shows that 178%. The project site is depicted there on the little red dot. And then to the right is just the location of the project site, and where Eddie's Market is located is south on the block that's south of this location. And that pretty much concludes staff's presentation. So our recommendation is for the adoption of the resolution to allow for the special use permit for the type 20 beer and wine sales at this location, 535 North Santa Fe. Available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. We do have two speaker slips for the applicant. And if Stephanie Ferguson would like to speak first?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephanie Ferguson. I am the Manager of Regulatory Affairs and Compliance for Apro LLC. We do business as United Pacific. We are here, we support this measure, and we are a responsible retailer who does agree to all of the terms presented by the Sheriff's Department and the city. And myself and Sheri are here for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. The Commission, do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Garrison?
We say that there's not an over-concentration, except if you go one full block either direction, there are two places that sell beer and wine. So to me, this puts not one or two, but five or six of these places. So I'm really concerned about an over-concentration. Number two, the crime stats bother me a lot. The other thing is, there's a school right across the street, catty corner to that, and there's a skate park right across the street. So those things alone cause me great concern about why we would approve another beer and wine sale in that area.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, Ms. Chow and Ms. Ferguson, regarding the hours. On page one of the staff report, Site and Project Description A, Site, it's like the third sentence says, "Site is currently developed with an automotive gasoline service station, open 24 hours, seven days a week, with four single pump islands and a convenience store, which is closed to the public from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., during which payment transactions for gasoline are made through the service window for security reasons." Then on the actual Exhibit A, page 10, number 11, says, "Sales of alcoholic beverages for off-site sales shall be permitted only between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m." So my concern is the closing time. Are we going to have the convenience store open for two hours now, which currently it says it's closed?
And I'll let the applicant echo on that, but my understanding is currently it's 10 to 5:00 when they're not open to the public. But obviously, if they're going to be selling alcoholic beverages until midnight, they have to open the store, and I'm sure that that would be the case, but there will be lockable doors, so it's not like people will be able to, you know, freely go in there and just without any supervision or anything like that. But I'll let the applicant explain further on that.
Thank you.
That's correct. My understanding is that we would change the hours of operation to comply, and we would open up the store for that purpose, to comply with the agreement.
So between 10:00 and 12:00, you can only buy beer and wine inside the store? Can you buy potato chips, too? And...
All goods. Yes, all items. Yes, yeah.
Now, Commissioners, something to think about is if your concern is about the high crime rate, maybe it is closed at 10 o'clock for inside sales, and you just do the alcohol from 9:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. Something to think about. Thank you, Ms. Chow. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you.
Ms. Chow, could you address Commissioner Garrison's comments about the location of another, from the other businesses that sell alcoholic beverages and also the crime and the distance? Is there a policy with distances relative to schools?
There is not, per se, in our code related to the request for alcoholic beverages. Commissioner Garrison's concerned about the fact that there are other facilities which sell alcohol not too far distance from this one, correctly identified in that explanation. The only problem for us is, when we analyze the project, we have to look at the census tract. So as it's shown on that particular project, the slide that I have here, the boundaries for the census tract... Oops, I think I went one over. So on this slide, where the actual census tract is identified or the beat map area, we have to confine ourselves within the boundaries of what that is. And I don't have one particularly showing the census tract, but within the census tract, there's only the Eddie's Market that's currently identified as being existing out of the three that are allowed. So from a standpoint of ABC's analysis, which is what they gave us information on for the census tract, we have to go off of that piece of information. So we cannot just step outside of the area that's being analyzed, even though what Commissioner Garrison identified is true, and there are other beer and wine sales in the area, so...
If I could amplify on that, it's true that the ABC has a structured way in which to present data. And so what they do is they take a census tract, and for that tract in particular, they look at the crime rate within that tract, and they also look at the concentration. In other words, the number of establishments that are licensed for the sale of alcoholic beverages. What we have before the Commission is a special use permit, which is a bit more expansive in the considerations that are allowed to the Commission. And so you're able to look at the overall region and, you know, base your considerations and determinations upon all the facts before you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sheri Olson, and I had a couple of comments to make regarding the Commissioners' concerns. We do have several other stations and markets that are near schools, but our policy is to keep our cooler doors locked. And if children do come in, we have the capability of locking them at the registers, and we do have a lot of security cameras in place. So we are very cognizant to have children in the area, and we are a very responsible retailer, and we make sure that when children do come into those stores, that those cooler doors are locked, and we're watching them through, obviously, our cameras and watching them in our stores. We're... We send all of our employees through the alcohol lead training. We are a very responsible retailer. And as for the census tracts, the problem with, that I find, because every city's over-concentrated. And the problem is, is that the census tracts, when you put everybody in the same area as being in a commercial area, those census tracts seem to get over-concentrated quickly because now you have everybody, you have all the restaurants together, you have all the off-sales together. And unfortunately, there's no way, and those census tracts always become over-concentrated. We might border three census tracts or four census tracts in this area, but like I said, it's because of all the commercial businesses being in the same location, same place. And I do go back to being like a responsible retailer, having points of sales. That sets us apart from a lot of other retailers that may not be as responsible. So with these conditions of approval, and there's quite a few of them here, there's over 21 conditions of approval, and that's quite considerably a lot of conditions. And we are more than acceptable to take in all those conditions and whatever you guys decide here tonight. But I just wanted to kind of go over some of your concerns and what we have in place here. We have over 20 cameras on our site, so it's very well secured for the location. And we haven't had, we get a few petty thefts in there, but nothing major. And so we consider ourselves not going good here. But I'm pretty blessed. So we're here to answer any other concerns you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Garrison, you were the one that asked those questions. Did you have additional comments to their response?
This special use permit says will contribute to the neighborhood general welfare. Another alcoholic beverage store in this area, I can't imagine how that contributes to the general welfare. It may be convenient, but you're talking about another block to get alcoholic beverages. So I just can't imagine how one more place to buy beer and wine contributes to the general welfare in a high-crime area next to schools and a skate park.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you. One more thought is, do we know, do you know the hours of Eddie's Market and when they sell alcohol?
I do not have that information, unfortunately.
Because I wouldn't want to state that 76 has to close at 10:00 if Eddie's is open until midnight. I would like to see them, if we approve the special use permit, to be the same. Thank you.
And we don't have a problem with that. We're not asking for anything. It's just we want to be able to be, you know, operate a responsible business.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer? If I can ask a clarification question, if, which the information I don't have at this point, as I stated, so only if it is more stringent or obviously than midnight, that's what you would be willing to propose?
Yeah, yeah. So if Eddie's was midnight, I would say, let's go along with the special use permit and not Section 1 of the staff report. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So we see a few of these every once in a while. It's been a while, but for myself, I typically pretty much follow the ABC census areas, and if there's room in the census area, then I'm typically fine with it unless there's some glaring issue. I know on some cases, it's been full already. They've already had three, and then we've had somebody come in and ask for a fourth. And then there's a case like this where they're close to a border of other census tracts. So there's other places that sell very close by, and then so I've not been in favor of those. But for me, I don't have a problem with this. This is only the second one in this census tract. Three's allowable. It's, you know, when you're talking about the closure, you get to the downtown area, that's what you're going to get. And I don't want to restrict them from the ABC guidelines of what's allowed, so I don't have a problem with it. And I think the conditions, these are standard boilerplate conditions for the most part, except for a couple of extra things, and I think it's adequate.
Thank you. That's all the speaker slips that were submitted. Do we have any other individuals that'd like to speak to this item? Okay, with that being the case, is there any more discussion amongst the Commissioners to staff or the applicant? Commissioner Garrison?
I would just like to go on record before, there's a motion that I adamantly oppose this for the reasons that I mentioned. A high-crime area, alcoholic beverages for sale in four or five other locations within a block, this does not seem to meet the need of contributing to the general welfare. In fact, I think it's unduly detrimental to the community to have more places to sell beer and wine. So for the record, I'm adamantly opposed to this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm on the other side. I support this, and will be voting in favor of it with the hours, clarification of the hours. I drove the area a couple of times, and one was this morning, late this morning, and the whole area around it, everything is clean, you know, the neighborhoods. People were off to work. There was someone on a scooter, and I don't think that this is going to have a detrimental effect. And again, if they allow three licenses, and this is only the second, I will be supporting it, so, thank you.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just for the record, in case there's issues down the road, I tend to be in favor, excuse me, of this process, or this item, for the reasons Mr. Carroll said. And then in addition, I think that the city is trying to clean up this area, and I don't mean clean up, but I mean improve and allow for development and improvements along this corridor. And so whatever we can do, including trash enclosures and small improvements like that, are good for it, and I think the cost of adding beer and wine is pretty limited for that exchange. So I'm in favor of this.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I'll add to the chorus. I agree with the sentiment to approve it for the reasons stated.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we need a motion in a second. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend adopt, that we adopt Resolution 2018, next in line, granting a special use permit to sell alcoholic beverages type 20, off-sale beer and wine for off-site consumption at 76 Gas Station, address 535 North Santa Fe Avenue, with clarification on the special use permit for the hours, closing hours of operation.
So just on the closing hours? So the opening at 9:00 would be acceptable, as long as if it's 10:00 or 11:00 or whatever it is at Eddie's Market? And if it is midnight, obviously, this is going to stay the same?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Our second motion.
Okay, the results are Rick Rossler being absent and Garrison opposition, with a balance in approval. So the motion does move. Item number two is an early design review for a site development plan for a 45-unit apartment complex on 3.7 acres on North Santa Fe. And during early design review, this is an opportunity for the applicant to make the presentation and for Commissioners to respond, and this is not a voting time. It's a time to give input to the applicant for the design and for the application. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission. A little overview of the early design review process. The early design review process provides the Planning Commission an opportunity to review initial proposals and providing preliminary comments to the applicant directly in this form. The proposals have not been routed or fully reviewed by city staff. The applicant will answer specific questions in regards to the project design and the thought process behind the initial proposal. There will be no formal vote or action associated with the early design review tonight. Staff has received a preliminary proposal to develop 45 apartment units on approximately 3.77 acres. The subject site is located on the north side of South Santa Fe Avenue between Marfista Drive and the city limits. The subject site is currently vacant land. Here's an aerial photo of the subject site, as well as a photo taken from South Santa Fe, looking onto the site. Again, it's 3.77 acres, one legal lot, and again, its current status is vacant. Surrounding land uses include single-family residences to the north, vacant land and single-family residents to the south, a landscape material business to the east, as well as vacant land to the west. The general planned land use designation for the site is medium-high-density residential. That designation allows for up to 15 dwelling units per acre. In regards to the zoning, the subject site maintains a zoning designation of multifamily residential, RM 15. That designation allows up to two stories in terms of development and a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. The proposal would include a request for a site development plan, secret review, as well as landscape review. The proposal includes the development of 45 apartment units within nine separate buildings. The density of the project would be approximately 11.9 dwelling units per acre. The development has been designed to provide two-story walk-up units with individual garages at a maximum height of 26 feet. Each unit would be two bedrooms in terms of size. The 3.77 acre site would be developed with nine buildings with a mixture of three to seven apartment units per building. In regards to parking, the city code requires 2.5 parking spaces for two-bedroom units. Based on the 45-unit count, the total required parking would be 133, or 113 parking spaces, excuse me. And the submitted site plan indicates 113 parking spaces would be provided. In regards to site amenities, the site has been designed to maintain a clubhouse, barbecue patio area, bocce ball court, as well as a walking trail area. Architecturally, the project's been designed around a contemporary architectural style. The buildings will be maintaining exterior finishes of smooth stucco exteriors and enhanced with composite siding, metallic eyebrow features, as well as stone and tile accents. Here's the floor plans for the proposed units. The units would be, again, two bedrooms and maintain a floor area of 1,686 square feet. With that, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission provide comments directly to the applicant in regards to the proposed design of the project. The applicant, as well as the design team, is here to provide the Planning Commission with responses and a description of the, the project itself. That concludes staff's report, and I'm also here and available to answer questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Is the applicant here to make a presentation? Please state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Kirk Muller. I'm with MAA Architects, 2173 Salk Avenue, Suite 250, Carlsbad. And yes, we're here, I'm here with the owner also.
Majid Portezavi. I'm a Gerard contractor doing construction, holding construction business in San Diego with almost 35 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, are there any specific questions that you have to start out with? Or would you like me to embellish on, on, on the staff report currently?
If you could embellish any old question.
Great. Well, I think one of the things that I'd like to discuss in more detail is, is kind of what the goals and the, the, the accomplishments that we'd like to achieve with this project are. 45 units is what we're proposing, which is, was stated already. We want to create something on this vacant parcel that is, is in tune with the, the neighborhood, something that's nice, that's going to bring attractive residences to the, the area. We are trying to incorporate a number of different open space type elements into this project that are unique to apartment complexes. We have a, a site that has an interesting topography at the rear of the site, and we want to try to incorporate that into the, the construction of the, the overall site by including walking trails and opportunities for community gardens and those types of things. And, you know, in my opinion, that's somewhat rare with a, a project of this size. And then we have some other, other amenities that we're proposing to add, a clubhouse and bocce ball court and open turf area and seating barbecue type areas for, for community congregation. We tried to incorporate colors that would blend in with the surroundings on the buildings. You know, there's, there's a lot of rock and different terrain behind the project. And so there, there are a number of retaining walls that we're proposing. And what we're trying to do is screen the retaining walls with the buildings at the back of the site so that they won't be as noticeable as being wide open. The retaining walls will be plantable walls, so they will look green and lush and hopefully blend in with the landscaping. I don't know if there's anything else you think I should add, Majid, either?
You did. You explained very well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant or for staff? Commissioner Garrison?
What would it look like from those houses from above? I mean, how high is this compared to the yards on the houses above them?
The, I guess the distance from the site above down below? I think our grade change is, it looks like it's about 60 feet indifference between the pad elevation, or excuse me, I'm sorry, 40 feet indifference. So there, the, the residences would sit 20 to 25 feet lower than the pads of the residences above.
Okay.
So they should see right over this project.
And what would the roof look like? I mean, it's a flat roof, so I assume you're going to have air conditioning units up there.
Correct. There'll be mechanical units, there'll be screened from below, but I guess from above, they will be somewhat visible if you were looking directly down on them, I think.
I'd be a little concerned about that.
And, and there are ways that we can screen them to...
Completely screen.
Yeah, we, we can screen them easily.
My second point would be no playground.
Okay.
You know, you got two bedrooms and, quite frankly, you got two bedrooms and a den, which is three bedrooms, which creates a problem with parking.
Sure.
So two concerns there. One is no playground, and two is putting two bedrooms in a den, which could easily be converted to a third bedroom, which creates a major parking problem.
Okay.
And my final point with this round is, is there parking on Santa Fe?
Currently, there is parking on Santa Fe. And it'll continue to have parking after the, if, in the event the project gets developed.
Gotcha. Okay. That's it for now.
Okay. Are you suggesting that we should incorporate a playground?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, how many kids are going to be here? If you got 45, you know, apartments, that's 90 bedrooms, at least 45 or 50 kids, if not 70.
Sure.
And Santa Fe's a pretty busy road. And you have to go all the way up to Mar Vista to cross, you know, to get, and, and there's really no playground close by.
Okay.
So, yeah, that would definitely be a recommendation from my perspective, anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Jackal?
I'm going to echo much of what Commissioner Garrison just said. In terms of the playground, your, your project site is an island. And any children there are isolated on that island. They must have playing space.
Okay.
Absolutely. The, I had written down the issue of the den. You're providing 113 parking spaces. Okay. With two bedrooms, that's a potential for four cars, which brings us to 180 parking spaces. And if the den becomes a bedroom, then we have a potential for 270 cars. So I don't know if there's some way to make the den less bedroom-able. But, but you have to handle where these extra cars are going to park, because even though parking is allowed on South Santa Fe, where are all the extra cars going to park? Which brings me to my feeling that maybe the project is simply too dense. So just a thought.
Okay.
I am wondering about the traffic coming in and out. There's no median along South Santa Fe at that point. But the sightline, you're on the curve of the hill right there. The sightline is not very far. So I'm concerned about the danger of how people get in and out. Is it, are people going to be able to turn left in there in a dangerous situation? I'm just asking you to think about this.
Sure. I think at this point, I know that there are proposed median modifications in the future for, for this road. I don't know when that would occur, but I think, you know, we can incorporate traffic control issues and do sightline studies, obviously, prior to, prior to moving forward.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That's all for right now.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your color and materials palette, I thought was beautiful. And I think it'll blend very well in with the, the topography of the area and seeing the mountains. And I didn't like the roof lines. I don't like that flat roof line and the concern about even if you keep it flat and you, you hide the HVAC units, it's going to have the, the look of being a pitched roof. So use a pitched roof.
Okay.
A concern as well on the den, because it, it will turn out to be another bedroom. Maybe it should be dual masters up there, because the master is quite large. And if you even just swapped them.
Okay.
And just a general question, market price?
I don't know.
Well, as far as I know, the market price is around 400.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Excuse me, I would like to add one, few things about the density. We are allowed to build 15 units per acre. That's come to 51 units. Because of those amenities which we considered, this had been reduced to 45. And also, we considered enough open space and those two other facilities. And as far as the den are concerned, I'm a builder and I know how we, of course, we are going to discuss with the design team in order we're going to prevent completely. We are completely opposed with that the den to be converted to the third bedroom. We are going to make that restriction in the CCNR, and also we are going to provide, even if necessary, by some plan change, we're going to consider that. Excuse me, in regard to the flat roof, we are open to any kind of pitch roof, because I'm very concerned also at the time we put the AC unit or FAU unit, it's got to be covered and the, the low units start to be ugly, especially from the, from the neighbors looking above.
In, in past projects, we've had the same situation where we've had dens and there's ability to convert them over to an additional bedroom. So the direction that the Planning Commission gave in the past was to modify the floor plans in order to open up those rooms, in order to create more of a, a open floor plan, in order to prevent the future conversion of that space.
Sure, of course.
But that might be something you might want to take into consideration as well.
Of course, yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So with the, I have a question on, on the patio areas. Are those fenced-in patio areas or just a concrete, concrete pad type of patio? What's, what's the plan for these individual patio areas in front of each unit?
The plan was to privately fence them in so that they would be private to that specific unit.
Okay. So it'd be helpful to kind of see some, some sort of idea on what that's going to look like. And, and also regarding fencing with these two retaining walls, these, these high retaining walls in the front along the street, those are, those will need some kind of fence along the top of that also, I'm assuming. So...
I think our, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think our thoughts with the, the private fence would be that they would be a 42-inch-high, you know, guardrail height-type fence so that it would still feel open, but define that specific owner or renter's yard.
Okay. Well, from the street, looking at these walls, going up and tiering up into, you know, 14 feet or so, we'd like to see that, plus then the fence and then the building behind it. A site with this kind of elevation, you know, it ranges from 40 to 50 feet plus, 55 feet from the street to the neighbors in the back. We, we really, it's very helpful for us to have some cross-sections in a couple of places through here, so we can really see what's going on.
Okay.
With the, with how these buildings are interacting with the street, the sidewalk, and the, and the neighborhood, and the neighbors behind. So, you know, those kind of pictures, something we really, really appreciate seeing, and it's, it's hard to get a, a feel for how it all fits together without some aids like that. But regarding the front patios that are going to be fenced in with buildings C and D, so then what we end up with is a very little narrow corridor there. And what, you know, it doesn't look too pleasing to me to have, is that maybe like a, looks like it's eight feet or so, I don't know what it is, between those front patio areas between buildings C and D?
Yeah, I think we have eight to 10 feet there between.
And, and so we don't really have any idea on what kind of, well, I guess that's all hardscape is what that would be, huh? And then...
The yard, I, I guess the, the fenced patio areas, we haven't defined what type of material would be placed on the, on the ground surface. There would be a sidewalk, obviously, to the main entry door and a sidewalk between the, the fenced areas. But I, I kind of envisioned those patio, or we'll call them yards, as, as a softer area that's, that's not paved. I think less paving is better.
Okay. So this common open space of the community garden that's up on top of the 10-foot wall is, the access to that is from the far west end or far east end of the wall?
Correct.
Okay. And it's, how are you creating level space there for those planters?
Gradual transition on the east side that would, would serve as the ADA access. You would, the fire turnaround, the site will be constructed in a way that that would not exceed 5% going up that fire turnaround. And then it would link into that walkway. And then from the west side, that, that would be a little steeper path. That would not be labeled the ADA path from, from the west side. It would be an access point, but not ADA accessible.
Okay. Maybe I'm just lazy. That looks like a long way to go for me with the...
Yeah, and one of the, the one... Yeah, and one of the, one of the things we discussed was potentially incorporating a stairway in the center of the site, or potentially two stairways, you know, breaking it up into thirds. So, that, that is an option.
Okay. And, well, you know, I just don't think you're going to find a lot of people willing to let the den go. But I personally, if this was coming through for an approval, I wouldn't. But, so that's just another, another voice to try to figure out something that's not going to have us, assuming that's a three-bedroom.
Okay.
Commissioner Garrison.
Thank you. A question for staff. Does Santa Fe have sidewalks both sides all the way to the school?
I know there's sidewalks.
If you go east, they've, they've done a lot of renovation of those streets or widening. And I'm assuming there's sidewalks all the way down. But that would be a major issue, because how do these kids walk to school?
Yeah, and let's see if the aerial, I'm not sure if the aerial photograph.
There are sidewalks on both sides.
But I think there's sidewalks on.
I, I, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. I think there's sidewalks on both sides.
That was part of the development when they put the wall.
You can see in the aerial aside, and you can show the sidewalks going on the north and south side of, of Santa Fe.
I think eventually, when the bike lane goes down to Mar Vista, that would make it easy to go up to Mar Vista and over, too. Because those bike paths will go right past the school. So, you might want to think about how you, you know, communicate with your residents as you're moving forward. That bike path is supposed to be completed next year, I believe. And you know where that is? It's on the opposite side of Santa Fe, where the building is. I would be a little concerned about interior sidewalks or as you come out of your garages. You know, there's a long stretch there where you could build up speed from the east to the west. And at the same time, you have cars backing out of those garages. And at the same time, you have people walking there. So, I don't know if there's something you can do with pavers or something that would, you know, make sure that people were a little more cautious through there. But, you know, those, those pavers could make a big difference, you know, going between the buildings and causing the drivers hopefully to slow down.
Okay.
Okay, we have several speaker slips. Laura Gonzalez, if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Actually, mine wasn't for this site. It was for the Orion Pacific on North Santa Fe. But I can still speak on this one. I don't, some of the concerns I have for the Mar Vista site is just the, how different it is from the neighboring community or the existing residents. There aren't many complexes nearby. Therefore, there aren't many parks nearby, as previously stated. So, I think it's just a very different market in terms of, it's currently just mostly homes. And I think right there would be perfect to just either leave it as is in terms of having that open space or developing some type of park or anything like that. Just because I don't think that this apartment complex is really ideal for the area. And again, I had concerns about how big the units are and how there's not many variety in size of units, just because not everybody wants two bedrooms. Some might just want one bedroom and smaller units, because not everybody has the big family demographic. So, those are just some of my comments. Awesome.
Thank you. Wendy Saposhin. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Wendy Saposhin, and I live at 1324 Cypress Drive. One thing that really gets me is when I see these apartments done and they don't show what it looks like behind it. It's all blue skies and birds flying. And that's not the reality of where this area is. And as a mother of five children, I get really upset about thinking about driving on here with all those children living in there. That is South Santa Fe Raceway. Right now, I bet you if you go down there, there is a parking, a car parked in every single spot that's along there. It is every morning, every night, people park there. So, if there's any overflow, there is no place for anybody extra. Nobody for Christmas dinner, nobody for Thanksgiving, nobody for sleepovers, anything like that. So, I'm sure if you go down there and see this minute, it's already full of cars. So, that is a concern to me about the parking. Also, if these children are going to Hanalee, how are they going to get across that street? I mean, that, that, that is, it is a raceway. People do not go 45. They go 55. And if you come around the bend with all those cars parked there, it is, it, it's frightening to me when I see people have to pull over. And because of situations like ways now, they have people cutting off through Mona Vista, through York, through all these areas to get to the 78, which clogs up Mar Vista. This is 45 units. We've got another 35 wanted on the corner of Cypress. We've got 60 across the street from the AMPM. We've got another 32. That's three, 400 trips a day, at least, that are going to hit Mar Vista. And I know that it's going to be fixed. I know we've got that under control. But that isn't going to be a complete solution to this. And I, I mean, I don't mind the, I do, I do mind the roof line, because I think that, I agree, you guys, the people living behind there deserve better. They've lived there a long time. Those are older homes like mine. And I do feel that, I like the open space. Bocce's cool. I mean, I don't know where the hiking trail is going to go to, but, I mean, that's a cool idea. The gardens, but you've got these people crammed in right up against a raceway. And if the kids were to run down that driveway or get out in some way, it, it sickens me. It's, 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 people are hit all the time on that street. And it's, I just would like there to be some consideration that it would be safer for those kids to get to school or get out of their apartment, apartments, to walk down to the AMPM. We see it all the time. So, I am opposed to all the building that goes on there in this neighborhood that we have cherished. I don't see any trees planted in this. I don't see the landscaping done that makes it fit in with the wooded area that is of this kind. So, I, I just would like everybody just to take a beat about the traffic that's going to happen and the traffic that exists and the parking that exists right now, before we go too far in approving things that we can't take back. This is going to be another North Melrose, and it's dangerous there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Key. And again, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Key. My address is 1322 Pepper Tree Lane. I am right behind the questionable project here. And I would like to say, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. It's not my first interaction with the applicant. As a matter of fact, he approached us, me and my partner, about four years ago with another extension of a 50-unit project. At that point in time, we were going back and forth and summarily, he decided to take out a bunch of trees in back of the yard without any discussion or further review of how it may, either, how we thought about it or how our neighbors thought about it. So, that was an arbitrary decision on its own, which didn't really sit well with myself. I basically concur with the individual here. The development of that area is probably going to have a negative impact with regards to the infrastructure within the city of Vista. I don't know if any consideration has been made to the impact of public safety there. On, more times than not, you'll find an accident on the, on the intersection of Montgomery and South Santa Fe. So, that's also a consideration to schools, the impact. You're talking about basically 45 units, so a third of that maybe. And the occupancy, we're not really clear or assured that there is going to be, they're going to hold with compliance of the project. So, we talk about 300 people, a third of that is children, 30%. So, you know, that's an impact on the overall school system. You're also talking about the aperture of noise. Right now, as it stands, there's no, there's no green that would, would lower the noise level. So, in terms of my neighbors and people who live on the county line, on the county side of things, I don't think they were made aware of the situation or with any guard, with regard, giving any kind of consideration to come and be vocal about either for, negative, or, you know, against. So, in conclusion, I would also have to recommend that, it was stated before that the individual, the applicant, did not provide everybody here at the city with, with the notes or plans. So, I would have to say that I apologize, because basically, we're taking up your valuable time. And upon maybe the applicant coming forward with a complete set of comprehensive plans and from a bird's eye view, as well as, you know, photos of where I live and where my neighbors live and how that's going to be impacted, that we, you know, furthermore reconvene and discuss, you know, whether or not this project is a viable asset for the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may. Do you have a question?
I got a quick question.
Chris.
Since you live in the area there, I, I've seen lots of cars parked along South Santa Fe, usually in the evenings and the mornings. I don't see apartment complexes or anything else in the area. Do you know where people are going?
Yeah, there is an apartment complex just, just east of, I believe it's Montgomery.
Okay.
And all those individuals who live in that, in that area, they moved up because consequently, when the construction went in for the new development for the road, that took away from the parking spaces there, so everybody moved up down below. And any given night, as you, as someone mentioned, it's, it's just tremendously dense.
Okay. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
I'm glad you asked that question, because from Montgomery West, it's car to car all along that, that edge of the street. So, thanks for asking that question. Thomas Martino.
My name is Thomas Martino, and I live up above the proposed units. And I thank you for the opportunity to let you know what's, how we feel about this. The traffic and parking on Santa Fe right there is very dangerous. The accidents from up above, we hear them on Montgomery and Santa Fe, and they're frightening. Where children would be able to walk across that street would be very, very scary. My real concern with the lot is, I've lived up above that hill for 38 years. And from our lot, we watch the neighbors have a very large parcel full of beautiful wild birds. We have falcons, eagles, hawks. We even now have a resident white owl that lives up there. And from the top, you can watch how these birds that have lived here for a long time swoop down into this lot and get their food. And my real concern is, how are these birds, what's going to happen to these birds when that's paved over with units? Where are they going to get their food? I have concerns with what they call hiking trails. It looks like the hiking trails are up behind the units. That's just going to put people closer to us. You know, more noise, more infringement of your privacy. We live in, we came and live in Vista for the private serene life. And now it seems we have an urban development going right in front of us. There are many lots that can be developed in Vista, existing lots that aren't housing food for the wildlife. Urban infill is a great way to provide the housing that's needed. And I would be devastated if this project went through.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a Matthew Moyer. Can you state your name and your address?
Good evening. My name's Matthew Moyer. I live at 1321 Pepper Tree and right next to Chris and Tom both. We live right on top of the proposed project. I, too, have to voice my concerns about the traffic and the parking. It is amazingly dense and I don't see how it could possibly go without having accidents. It, it would need a stoplight at Montgomery to make anything safe in that area. I'm also worried about the noise from the proposed project coming up and affecting us. They've also, as, as Chris mentioned, they originally came in and started clearing the property with what I believe is not permitted. They had no permits at the time. And we're going to start chopping trees down. These are 20-year-old twerk trees, 20 to 30 feet tall, house many birds, along with what Tom said. We do have a lot of hawks and falcons. We have road runners. We have finches, hummingbirds, great road runners. The list goes on and on. They're all protected. Many of them are endangered. So, we're, we're, you know, I don't see his addressing those issues with his green belt area. And to cut down existing trees to add a new green belt seems a little superfluous. So, already, we've witnessed he, he started to cut those down. We, we asked him not to, and they did stop. But his intent was to, to just clear. And I don't think he's taking into consideration the, the wildlife in the area or the neighbors. So, I'm opposed to the project for many reasons. But as far as safety concern for Vista, I don't think it's a great project for Vista. Being the parking and the traffic would just be horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I do have pictures, if you'd like to take these of the areas.
Okay. You could give those to Ms. Turley. Thank you. Did the commissioners have any more questions of staff or the applicants before we go into this next, next part? Okay. What we'd like to do for the applicant, thank you, Public, for your input as well. It's appreciated. Now, we'd like to take some time to look at the project from four different categories. Basically, for the applicant to where you can begin to have a specific opinion and specific, specific direction as to where this project should be taken. And I'm going to start with the site design and the traffic issues. Are there any points that we want to reiterate or to make clear? Mr. Garrison.
Does the site design include landscape?
No, it does not. I'll handle that as the last item.
Okay. I would indicate, again, my concern about the sidewalks internally and the safety of the individuals as cars go by and people are backing out of garages. So, as far as site design, to me, there needs to be something that would prevent cars from traveling too fast down through here and people having a difficult time getting across there.
Okay. Any other commissioners on site design and traffic? Commissioner Carroll.
Mr. Ressler, what, what would be the typical requirement for studies for this type of project as far as traffic and biology?
Yeah, you know, we haven't analyzed the project, but I'm assuming a project this size, we'd have some type of an evaluation, expanded evaluation, mitigated negative deck, something like that. Typically, we would have, yeah, noise, traffic, air quality, cultural resources potentially, greenhouse gases. Those are the typicals that we'd see of a project this size.
So, all those, all those would get looked at when it's more of a formal submittal. But now, the pedestrian with the, with the kids that might be trying to get to other places on the other side of South Santa Fe, that, that is kind of a unique situation with this project, I think. Is there any way to add in some type of special request to analyze pedestrian use as the project interacts with facilities on the south side, with the school and businesses on the south side?
Yeah, we'll take note. And when the formal application comes in, we can notify our traffic engineer and our engineering division in terms of the, the potential links and, and take a look at. and take a look at how that connectivity could work, but we'll make sure that we take note and forward that information on to the other departments.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
I would just agree very much with the concern about pedestrians, especially children, getting across the street safely. So, please do look into how that can happen.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Garrison?
Yeah. One question on the entrance. If you have cars parked up close to the, to that entrance, cars coming out of there are going to have a very difficult time getting out. Is there anything we can do to expand that? I know it takes away parking spots, but expand that sight line. What is, what is the standard and what can we do?
I don't, I couldn't quote the standard. I can say that I spoke to the traffic engineer before tonight's meeting, wanted to confirm the movements that'll take place at this intersection or this driveway. He indicated there'll be full access at this, at the driveway. However, the concern that he had was making sure there was adequate line of sight, so that we'd make sure that when we did the analysis for the project, we'd confirm that there was adequate line of sight, and potentially, there could be a, a loss of parking adjacent to the driveway in order to create that appropriate sight of line of sight.
I think it would be a, a fair balance, because you put a big truck on that east side, and somebody trying to get out of there, they, they can't see traffic coming over the hill, and once they get over the hill there, they're down to that entrance there pretty quickly.
Is traffic able to go to the east and west out of the complex? Can they cross the street and go eastbound?
Yeah, currently, right now, they would have full access, so you'd have right in, right out, left, left in and left out as well. Yes. It'd be full access. However, there is a long-term plan for a median in South Santa Fe. However, it hasn't been funded at this point, so that's something that'll take place in the future. So, as of right now, though, it would be full access.
Okay. I would have the applicant do some additional studies on that. If you were coming out of the complex, going to the east, if traffic's going 50 miles an hour plus, I think there is potential issues that we want to avoid. So, I think that is something that should be taken into consideration. Anything else on site design? It was mentioned about the playground area for the children. I see that under site design rather than landscape, but Commissioner Garrison, you want to?
In that case, I do have a comment on that, and that is, there are going to be 45 to 80 kids there, and there's no place to play. Bocce courts, now, the other places that are there just aren't for small kids. So, I would, I would definitely recommend some sort of a playground where the kids can have access without crossing Santa Fe.
I just wanted to note that the, the plan, as indicated before, has a, a walking trail and, and a community garden area. I think those are something that are unique that our planning commission hasn't seen in the past. I'd just like to make sure that you guys take a look at that and provide us any direction or comment in terms of those amenities as well, so that in the future, we can make sure that the project goes in the direction that you're, that you're envisioning.
Okay. Commissioner Bell?
Since we're on the subject to the applicant, I would just say, when you're eventually presenting to us and discussing with the city in the next months and however long it takes, get more information as to who your constituents are going to be here, however you can. I don't know how you do that, but it sounds like the, the assumption is this is going to be a family-oriented apartment complex, from what I'm hearing from the other commissioners. And that makes sense, as opposed to singles, young professionals, who would probably live downtown Vista and more, more than likely, as opposed to here. So, aim your design with the site with that in mind, and tell us why you're doing certain things, and that'll help us get in line, however you decide to do it. Just keep that in mind, okay? Thanks.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ressler, I, I think the, the walking trails and the community garden, I, I think that's marvelous. I mean, from the standpoint of, it does bring together families when you've got, you know, parents, brothers and sisters, everybody's planting a tomato plant, and is this one ripe? And I, I think it's a good thing. So, from my aspect, I, I see that there's some community, there's some things for adults and childrens to do in those two specific areas. So, I liked it. Thank you.
Any comments from the commissioners on the grading that is being proposed on this parcel of land? Commissioner Garrison?
Something quickly. How much of the open space is the slopes? In other words, I'd be concerned that we don't say we have compliance with the open space, but all the open space are steep slopes.
It's a quick guide, because we need to do a full analysis of the project, but based on our progress. It is required to have a total of 11,250 square feet of open space, which that's based on a calculation of 125 square feet per bedroom on the project. With that being said, the project identifies 5,625 square feet of that required open space being up on, on the slope. It does indicate the slope is less than 10%. However, it looks like about 50% of the open space is up in that area.
Would that allow them to be in compliance, even though it's open space that isn't usable?
We do have a limitation in terms of slope and the amount of area that could be identified as open space on slopes. I'll have to do the research on that. I apologize, I don't have an answer on that one tonight.
Just a couple of additional comments on grading, as Commissioner Carroll brought up. A minimum of two site sections. We've got to see the existing profile of the existing grade and the proposed profiles, you know, where your cut is, where your fill is. And I think it's going to be important to include the homes that sit beyond the property boundary, so where we have a very clear understanding of those grade lines. And at the same time, make sure one is cut through that community garden, so we can see just how steep that is, because that's, it's a good part or a good aspect of the proposal, but let's just make sure it works with those grades and the contour lines that we have shown on this grading plan. If there's nothing else on the grading, let's look at the, at the architecture, the floor plans, the roof plans, and the exterior elevations. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I agree with all the comments about screening the air conditioning units, possibly with the gable roof. To me, the architecture is very minimalistic, and not getting into gingerbread, but I'd like to see some more architectural details. It, it just doesn't look to me quite as though people were supposed to live there. That's the best way I can explain it. I would also like to have a perspective from, say, across South Santa Fe, looking up the hill, at, at what someone would see with your buildings and then the landscape, trees, whatever, and the houses above. What, what is that going to look like? Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the architecture? A comment that's been made before is on that den. For $200, you can put a door on there, frame it up, and you've got three bedrooms. If you choose to stay with a two-bedroom den scheme, I would strongly suggest that you position that den such that it's more of a loft where it can't easily be converted to a bedroom. Or, you can keep it as it's proposed and modify your parking to give you some options. The game is played many times with the den, and so oftentimes, I don't want to be misled by the label of a space, because people are going to use it the way that they want to use it, and I just want to make sure that we have the proper parking for this development, because it is an issue citywide, and I don't want to create something worse than what we already have. Nothing else on floor plans, roof plans, or exteriors? Okay. Landscaping. Any comments or suggestions on landscaping? Ms. Jackal?
Yes, I would be very interested in seeing your complete landscaping plan, and there has been discussion about trees between your property and the houses above. Really think about trees remaining, if possible, the ones that are there, and what other trees you might need to plant to screen the people above from, from what's going on down below, not to mention the, the landscaping for the people who live here. Thank you.
Commissioner Garrison?
She said exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. Any other comments? Just a couple of things. The issue of fencing brought up, was brought up. Let's give, if you could give us an idea on the height of that fencing in those private yards? The material, is it concrete block? Is it wood? That would be helpful. I think as you prepare a landscape plan, you've got somewhat of a challenge because of that granite slope, and there's not a lot that grows on that granite. So, your plant palette needs to be suitable for the soil type. You can amend that to some degree, but we all know that there's granite there, and it just doesn't grow a whole lot. That's all that I have written down. Student commissioners, you've heard a lot of discussion. One student commissioner, do you have any input or opinions on what was stated?
Not, not yet, sorry.
I hope that you have been somewhat encouraged by your application and that you're able to leave tonight with some ideas that maybe you need to clarify for us, and also some ideas that you hadn't thought of. Thank you for the opportunity for us to review and give you some opinions, and we do hope it's helpful. So, with that, we'll, we'll close this particular item, unless there's something else that needs to be addressed on this. Are there any other reports or comments from staff or from commissioners?
We are planning for our next meeting, which probably May 1st, so we won't be the second meeting, I'm sorry, April 3rd. I jumped one meeting ahead. I'm sorry about that. Boy, I'm going really fast here. April 3rd would be the next meeting. There are about three items that are scheduled to appear before you that evening, and then we won't have the meeting on April 17th. And then the next meeting will be May 1st. Sorry about that.
No updates? No questions on current projects? Commissioner Garrison?
Is there any feedback from the city council meeting that related to the environmental issues that were, that came up with the last Parks and Rec, or last Planning Commission? Any feedback? Climate change?
Oh, the climate action plan. John actually had a, a similar discussion with the council regarding the climate action plan and just kind of letting everybody know where we're at with the studies and updating it. So, no news. No news.
So, they did not approve or disapprove anything that the Planning Commission recommended? In other words, it's still being considered?
Yeah, that was just a discussion with the city council, just like what John had with the Planning Commission. So, there was, there's no decision being made yet. It's just a discussion.
What's, any update on the redevelopment of the Seo Santa Fe?
Things are moving forward, as I know and understand it, and no news as far as different dates or anything like that. You see still action going on out there. Schedule still appears to be the same. So, moving forward.
Okay. Commissioner Garrison? Oh, is that leftover? Okay, I'm sorry. If there's nothing else, then the meeting will be adjourned, and...
We did have a speaker earlier that I think actually wanted to speak on an item that was not on the agenda. I'm not sure if she's still here tonight, but I'm not sure if we should give her an opportunity to at least speak.
So, yes, Laura Gonzalez, 322 Cananea Street. So, I actually wanted to speak on the development that was on Cananea Street and North Santa Fe, that is by Orion Pacific. So, I wasn't aware of any of the updates. Last meeting was on June 6, 2017, for the Vista Planning Commission meeting, where they discussed their designs and everything, but I live on that street, and I've seen that they have since then, or I don't, not sure if it is them, but there has fencing that has begun on the land and clearing of natural plants, landscape. So, I just had a question about whether or not their design was approved and how, you know, all the questions and concerns that were brought up at that meeting, how they were addressed, because I did sign up to get information on that. So, I wanted to get clarification on whether or not that design was approved and if there are going to be apartment complexes developed on that ten acre lot.
Mr. Ressler, could you give us an update on that?
I believe, I believe the speaker is talking about Perseia. It's the project on North Santa Fe. It's about 300 or so units that are being proposed. The project is still under review. There is an environmental document, an EIR, that's been prepared and is, I believe, is actually, it's been released for public review at this time, so the project is still yet to come before the Planning Commission for, for decision.
Is this one near Bobear?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And if the speaker hasn't already done so, on our website, we have an e-notice signup that you might want to sign up for, so that any future projects, you'll have notification via email in terms of our agenda here.
Yes, and I also wanted to bring to your attention that the actual audio and video footage of that meeting on June 6, 2017, has not been made available on the City of Vista website. It's only available through the clerk, so I wanted to bring that to your attention as well, because I think it is important that that is available online, so it's more attainable to the public, because it wasn't just I that spoke against the constructions, the apartment developments that day. It was other residents, so I think that that's very important.
My apology for misunderstanding which project that you wanted to speak on. And, Mr. Ressler, thank you for bringing that issue up.
Did you get your question answered as to procedures? Do we have that next?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, regarding the project she's talking about, I drove by it over the weekend, excuse me, and I too saw that they're moving dirt. Any idea what's going on and how, why they would start before anything? What do we call that?
Will you be checking on that?
Yeah.
As I say, John Con... I was going to say, John Conley's actually going to be the planner on the project, or he is a planner, so I know at next meeting, he might even want to bring that to his attention. If not, we'll, we'll try to get some type of update from him.
Yeah, because it does look a lot, it does not look like weed, weed abatement. It looks a lot, a lot more than that, that they're trying to do.
We'll double check on that.
Thanks. Mm-hmm.
I don't see any other requests to speak, and so we will adjourn the meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you.